Good evening. Welcome to Grand Blank Township Board of Trustees meeting for January 25th. If you could all rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, Clerk Robertson, if you could call the roll.
Okay. Trustee Hugo is absent. Trustee Fike?
Here.
Trustee Raridan?
Here.
Trustee White?
Here.
Treasurer Kilmer is absent. Myself, I'm here. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five members present. A quorum.
Thank you. Now, at this time, I would ask for an approval of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Raridan, support by trustee Fike.
Motion by Raridan, supported by Fike. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you. And now we'll go to public comment. And is there anybody here who would like to make a comment? Okay. Seeing no public comment, bring back here to the board. And I'll ask for approval of the consent agenda. Motion by Dr. Raridan, support by trustee Fike.
A motion by Raridan, supported by Fike. Consent agenda. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you. Under old business, the board will consider Resolution 22-1 to approve a 5K walk-run race on Pagels Drive for the Grand Blank Band Boosters from 8:30 a.m. to 10 a.m. on May 22nd, 2022. I think we asked Chief Wiles to do some research on it, and he's here this evening to bring us up to date.
Yes, good evening. I did have the opportunity to speak with the organizer of that event. It is for at least the band boosters there at Grand Blank High School. The vast majority of this course or the route for the race is in the city of Grand Blank. Our role in the township is very minor. I have no safety concerns with that. All the traffic spots that could cause safety issues reside in the city, so our role in that will be very minimal. Talked to Chief White at the city. They're reviewing the application, and if they approve it, I don't see no reason for us not to approve it here at the township.
Any questions for Chief Wiles? Okay. Thank you, chief. Somebody care to?
I'll make the motion, sir.
Okay. Motion by, okay, seconded by trustee White.
Very good. Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B under old business is our strategic plan update. Mr. Limada.
As the board recalls, two weeks ago, we were going through our annual review, at least a, biannual, I should say, because we're going to do it for sure every January, every July, and then we take specific topics each month. We had made pretty good progress, but in the interest of time, we skipped two. They were really under the infrastructure goal. Number one is the new DPS and fire department facilities to be built over on the formerly known as Playland property, is attached to our campus. And then we also have an update on the infrastructure for the IT upgrades. Director Sears was unable to be here this evening, doing to be a little under the weather. We do have Assistant DPW Director Greg Boggs can answer some questions. I should warn you, he has not been integrally involved in the new DPS facility with a lot of those meetings, but we also have Fire Chief Bob Burdette here, who is going to speak on the fire station upgrades, as well as the Station Two expansion and renovation that we've discussed as part of this project. I can give you brief updates. We've gone to the board. We discussed looking at the project management and what that looks like. We do have requests out there now for project managers. I think we selected five or six firms that we solicited from, and then, of course, it's open for anybody else who'd be interested. So that's where the process is. We are moving forward. Again, we do have, you know, over the last few years, we've been preparing for this thing. We did do the space needs assessment study and put all that together. We're really at that part where now we just really got to get the bids for project management and start bringing some of those in so that we can bring those to the board for moving this forward. I do want to bring up Chief Burdette, and he can provide that update to the board as well on the progress that he's making when it comes to the fire stations.
Good evening.
Good evening. As Dennis mentioned, Station One, we're in the process of getting the project manager in place and then sending out the request for bid on that. Our number two station off Baldwin Road, we've recently sent out a request for proposal to numerous architectural firms and construction companies. We've, we're getting information back. Bid opening should be taking place on February 11th. We have a walkthrough with a couple of presenters on Monday morning, and so that's where we're at with it right now. Okay?
To update the board on the fire station number two over on Baldwin Road, again, we're looking at taking that station. We have been running shifts out of there since COVID. It truly is a COVID-related expense. In the fire station number one here in the Township Administration Building, we don't really have enough room to provide the separation that was required from a social distancing standpoint, especially when it's staffed 24 hours a day. That's why we moved some shifts over there. And then looking at Station Number Two and getting ready for the build-out on the south end, that's anticipated with the Grand Blank Enterprise Park moving forward, as well as Tech Village. We should do it now, and the nice thing that occurred was we do have an influx of cash from the ARPA funds, that this would be an excellent project for the board to consider for use of that ARPA funds. We talked about, you know, putting a list together. We're not prepared to bring that to the board yet, but it will be coming very soon. Our first report on that is due in April of 2022 on where we intend to spend the money, so it'd be nice if the board has an opportunity during February and March to kind of get a feel for staff's recommendations on where some of those funds could be best spent, especially tying to the impacts of COVID, because that's really what the money was designed to do, and we're going to try to do that. We, I think I told the board last time that they gave us that standard deduction of $10 million, so we can spend the money in more ways than just water and sewer infrastructure, which is a great thing for us. If we really look at COVID impacts, parks and recreation, fire department are two very easy arguments to make about the COVID impacts and a great way to spend that money. So that will be coming to for consideration. We also had the DDA vote to support. After hearing a presentation from Chief Burdette, they voted to support moving that station forward and getting it done, and that was before we knew we'd have the money from the ARPA funds to spend on it. So the DDA was committed to supporting it as well, so there's a lot of support there, but the DDA may need to use their money in other ways where we could use this money potentially for ARPA.
So, Mr. Limada, remind me, we, with regard to the build-out for Station Two, well, that, are we doing something with regard to, I know the, you know, equipment after they use it, the turnout gear, whatever, has to be separated from the rest of the station, right? So not everybody's breathing all the toxins from that. Is that something we're going to build into that, or do we have something like that?
Yeah. If you look at both the design of one and two, you know, one of the things that, you know, shocking to find out is the rates of cancer are so much higher in fire service that you, you know, they really started taking a different look at what you do with things. You don't really think about it, but bringing back your turnout gear and the uniforms that you're wearing after going to fight in a fire, you need to carry those toxins and potential carcinogens, so there's ways to treat it, way to separate it. You have a decontamination room, and then we've also been having a conversation, Chief Burdette and I, about providing second pieces of turnout gear, even so that for guys who are still on shift, that they don't have to put the same equipment back on to go on a second call. We're going to take all the precautions we can and build them into this plan to make sure that we're doing the right thing for our employees.
Okay, good. Anybody have any questions on fire department? Okay.
Are we on track, then? I think we're, you know, the same thing I've been asking as we go through these, is we feel like as a board that we're on track, that the staff's moving in the right direction, is accomplishing the goal that the board had for us.
I think so.
Thank you. Next up is the IT infrastructure upgrades. Both Robbie Baller and Nathan Lucavelt are here. Nathan will kind of walk you through some of the things that he has done, especially from a capital improvements plan, and then touch on how he's getting us ready to be safe and prepared to meet whatever the future's going to bring us. And Nathan, would you come up to the podium?
Good evening.
Good evening. So, right now, we're working heavily on the Office 365 migration, so most of you have probably received an email from me. Just wanted to let you guys know that I'm always available if you guys need any help with that. The 365 migration did get pushed back slightly due to some licensing changeover to make sure it was CGIS-approved licensing, but I think I've marked it down to finish it by the end of, or the, I think at the end of Q2, but I believe that we're going to be done by the 14th of February at the latest. So most everybody's going to be migrated to 365 before that date, and I don't foresee any issues with that. The computer replacements that we were trying to do last year, just kind of following up on that a little bit, we were able to exceed the amount of computers that we wanted to get replaced here, you know, following the strategic plan of IT upgrades. We wanted to make sure that all these computers that are kind of outdated here start to get updated. So we replaced, I think, over 20 of them, and, you know, this year, that kind of restarts and we're continuing on. There's a lot of computers that still need to be replaced, so just kind of a yearly goal is around 20 computers. The agenda today has a couple of different things on there that we're trying to do. Some changes to the cybersecurity infrastructure that we have in place right now to protect the township, some removals to bring the price down of some unused services through our existing cybersecurity infrastructure, our managed services. There was a help desk that we put in place the previous year, and that was very underutilized, and so we kind of gotten rid of that, and we added a lot of holes that, you know, increased our cybersecurity posture. So that's what I'm trying to do here, and give us kind of, you know, a head-up in the game a little bit and start to move in the right direction. Network switch refresh, that was approved last year. You know, I wish the, wish it was already done. It probably should be, but because of COVID and because of delays in supply chain right now, we're still waiting on the equipment for that. So the last estimate I had was by the end of February, and that hasn't changed, so I'm hoping that's still the case. I think we've got most of them at the vendor right now, except some of the main ones, a couple, couple that haven't come in yet. So by the end of February there, hopefully they'll be in, and we'll be able to start working on the replacement of our network infrastructure here to, you know, bring us into the 21st century a little bit. Last year, we did have on the CIP agenda to replace our firewall in the network, which kind of protects all the computers here. It acts, everything goes through the firewall. Every computer here that goes on the internet is protected by the firewall, and that was out of CGIS compliance in October of last year, so we definitely got that replaced in October, and that was successful, no issues. A portion of that, though, that project was pushed out because we need to finish the network, the network switches. They need to come in, and we need to put those in place before we finish that project. And that's kind of redesigning how the network is laid out to containerize the buildings so that, you know, lowers the opportunity for hacks to move from this building to the other building and things like that. So it's just increasing the security. Couple other projects in the pipeline this year that I'm starting very, very soon. Multi-factor authentication is going to be put in place within the next month or so for administrators, Robbie and I, to become compliant with cybersecurity insurance requirements. And we are implementing know-before security awareness training for employees to educate employees on how to identify phishing, phishing emails and things like that before they fall for them. So that should happen very soon. That's, that's pretty much it. Any questions?
So one of the things that we had an issue, and I think you guys are doing a great job bringing us up to date, I think one of the issues we had too was we were trying to put new fiber in, right?
Oh, correct.
And we found out that evidently the conduit or what have you is that runs over the police department.
Thanks for bringing that up, yeah.
Needs to be replaced, but we can't do that until spring to dig up part of the parking lot.
Yeah. We found that there's a break in the pipe between the township building and the police station. We were replacing the old fiber connections, and he is correct, apparently because the asphalt companies are not open during the wintertime, we're going to have to wait to dig that up and replace the piping. So that will be coming too.
One of the things you mentioned that I'm not familiar with, so on the firewall, you mentioned that in October, we, our CGIS compliance had or would have expired?
Yes.
What does CGIS, is that like a standard that we try to reach or maintain?
What does CGIS stand for again? Criminal Justice Information System? Criminal, thank you. Yeah, so it's something to do with the FBI, and we have to be in compliance for the police department to use their system. So they have a security policy that we have to follow, and vendors will submit for CGIS compliance, and they only get it for so long, and this one was expiring in October last year. So we had to get a new unit because they weren't renewing it.
So it is a compliance standard that law enforcement agencies try to achieve?
Yes.
Which probably helps us to size our.
For sure. Yeah, because the whole purpose is to make sure that you're staying up to date with the latest security stuff.
So the Microsoft switch over to 365, that'll help with security as well as just functionality or?
Yeah, there's actually a lot of things that that will help us with security-wise. Conditional access and multi-factor authentication is being implemented for all employees, so multi-factor will be required if you're logging in to a web-based email client.
The spam filter you have works very well.
It's good to hear. At the beginning, it was, it took a while for us to get to a good point, but it's starting to work well.
Just caught a few things I had to remove, and, but it's good because it cuts down a lot on, a lot of stuff coming through.
Yeah.
I think you guys are doing a great job with what you're doing, so.
Thank you.
Moving along. Anybody have any questions regarding our T?
Nathan, in your opinion, we're making good progress on our goal, and we're on track where we should be as far as making the progress that we wanted on the infrastructure IT upgrades.
Yes. Yeah, I think so.
Thanks.
Anything else for Mr. Limada with regard to strategic planning on the update? So we'll go look, review it again in June, did we say?
July, we'll, first meeting in July, we'll take a look and go through it again to reset any goals that we want to take a look at if we've accomplished a certain thing. And then, of course, in July, we worked this year on a lot of the first-year goals. Next year, we want to put into those grids what our second-year goals are, what our third-year goals are, you know, the following year. So build out new goals and then build strategies and tactics around there so that we can put some budget dollars behind them, make sure that we can afford to carry out what we're doing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Limada. Under new business, the board will consider a motion to approve Row PSC's engineering and design proposal for $59,500 and authorize the township superintendent to execute all related contracts and documents. I know we have Mr. Boggs here, Deputy Director for Department of Public Service.
Good evening, everyone. So at the last meeting, we brought to you a proposal about three sanitary sewer infrastructure projects we wanted to get designed. Well, reluctantly, well, not reluctantly, but we brought kind of the wrong proposal. We brought the construction management part of the proposal and not actually the design, so we kind of read the wording wrong on it. So we need this proposal, which we would come to you later on for that when the project is going out for bid and running the actual project for Row to do, but this is actually for the design of the project. So we're bringing this to you guys for approval, so we can get this in design and out to bid, hopefully by, maybe this fall, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, this fall, so.
Okay. Any questions? This is three sites?
Yes.
Where'd I be again?
So we've got a, we had a kind of catastrophic failure last year over on Grand Blank and Dort Highway behind the food castle. So we want to upsize this line and replace it because there's some settling, there's some bellies in there, and it just needs to be redone. The other issue is over on Saginaw Street at Deep Dale at Warwick Hills, so that sewer is running backwards, so it takes the manhole to fill up to a certain elevation to pull, push the sewage through, so it needs to be redesigned. And then there's a third area that, there's a manhole and the piping, it's saddling over at Regency Park off of Holly Road. So these are on our, we clean these lines quarterly just to make sure, you know, we don't have any issues, but they, you know, desperately need to be repaired, and so they're working correctly, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Boggs? Care to make the motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Fike, trustee Fike makes the motion, supported by trustee White.
Very good. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you. Also, with regard to Department of Public Service, Mr. Boggs, the board will consider a motion to approve a proposal from Row PSC to provide study and planning for an elevated water storage tank for $10,200 and authorize the township superintendent to execute all related contracts and agreements.
So this is just the study on the possibility of adding a water tower on the northeast. It would be our pressure district one, and we call it. It's fed by Genesee County's Center South Booster Station, so over time, with the build-out over there, we noticed that there's lots of pressure fluctuations on that side because the tower out here can't really maintain the pressure. So when the station's running, it's great, but when the, when we're just running off the tower, it, you know, with demand and everything, we have a lot of pressure fluctuations. We get a lot of complaints, so we want to study, see where the best place to put a tower, and then in the next couple of years, get going and putting something on that, increase reliability, fire flows, and have happy customers, so.
Any questions, Mr. Boggs, with regard to this?
So you don't know specifically where yet, Greg, but give me a little landmark or what are we talking about over there?
Probably don't want to say exactly where yet.
Oh.
The northeast area, so we're looking at south of Maple, obviously, Hill, Belsee. I know we have a lot of pressure issues on that side of town.
I get it. You know me, I always want to know where stuff's going to go.
Absolutely, yeah. No, it's, no, see, we know, like I said, people, we get a lot of calls and complaints of fluctuating pressure, and, you know, we had a power outage last, what was it, last spring when they were doing the gas line over there, and then like pressure just dropped right out because the booster station lost power, and it, you know, it happened like two weekends in a row or something like that, and it's, it just kind of wake up our eyes like, hey, we need to really expedite this and what we can do to make sure, I mean, there's no fire protection, there's no, I mean, that's serious, so we want to have a redundant system or a reliable system, so.
Anticipated cost of the system is about $2.5 million, so you'll be seeing this come before you over the next couple of years as we prepare to do it.
Absolutely.
I recall having them paint it as close to a million, I think. Yeah.
Yeah, well.
Any questions for Mr. Boggs with regard to water tower? Someone care to make that motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay. Supported by trustee Raridan?
Supported by Raridan. Okay. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item C, the board will consider a motion to approve Managed IT and Cybersecurity Services for 2022 with NetSource One in the amount of $37,427 and authorize the township superintendent to execute any and all related contracts and agreements. Mr. Lucavelt?
This is what I was talking about with the improvements to the cybersecurity infrastructure and the managed services we have here. So kind of did go over it, where we're trying to lower, remove certain, like the help desk services that we weren't using to bring the costs way down, and then beef up our cybersecurity a little bit, so. Any questions?
Nathan did a great job of research in this, just for the board's information, and took a look. We're using Sentinel Technologies, and actually Nathan came to us from Sentinel Technology, if you guys recall, but he did a, he looked at it, did research on it, and brought it back and said, look, by eliminating some of these services that we don't really need that we can handle in-house and using it in alternate vendor, you know, the first-year costs are, there's an addition in there, but then everything after considerably moving forward. So appreciate the fact that Nathan was able to do the research for us, and in the long run, it's going to end up saving us quite a bit of money while enhancing our security upgrades.
So if we had a cybersecurity attack, this company could fix it?
This company, well, one of the vendors we have on here, definitely, with all this together, we're in the right direction. If we have an attack, we'll, one, be able to know we had an attack, and two, we have a, we'll have a 24/7 team that's working to analyze logs and actually be able to respond to things if we're sleeping or something like that. So we will be able to remediate things much, much faster than we would be able to normally.
Mr. Lucavelt, are we, have we, I think we've had a study where we had somebody look at how many attacks we get in the course of a period of time, right, or no?
That might have been before. I don't, I don't think there was anything regarding how many attacks at a certain amount of time.
Okay.
But there definitely was a study on kind of the flaws in the, in the points that you could improve upon. So part of that was things that I had targeted because I did kind of, some of that work for me.
So this is high on the priority list in terms of trying to prevent?
Yes, and one of these actually is something that normally is kind of out of the range of a government facility, but luckily it was a agency that provides things specifically for state and local governments at a cost that we can actually afford, so.
Okay. Very good. Anybody have any questions? Somebody care to make a motion? Mr. White?
Motion by White?
Supported by?
Supported by Fike?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Item D, the board will consider a motion to renew the annual maintenance and licensing for the Highland OnBase document management software through data services in the amount of $20,875.49 and authorize township superintendent to execute all related contracts and documents. I'm sorry? Robbie's going to come up and bring this to us. Baller, good evening.
Good evening. Well, OnBase document management solution is what we store all of our documents in digitally so we can easily access, retrieve them. So like with FOIA requests, we can easily retrieve all those documents. We scan those in or upload them into the system and index them. A lot of the, a lot of the documents we have currently in there right now was all the building plans, our building documents that were in the vault. the building plans, our building documents that were in the vault back there, thousands upon thousands of documents. And all those are indexed based off of a permit number, an address, a PID, and app enabler from the application for the OnBase system. The app enabler ties in, integrates with the BSNA system, so just a couple clicks, you can extract all those documents that are associated with that particular parcel or location. So this is the annual maintenance renewal and it's usually budgeted every year for, for this software.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Beller?
Yep.
Thank you. Motion by Trustee Raridan, supported by?
Trustee Fike, okay. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Item E, the board will consider a motion to approve the Department of Public Services, just, I think it's for Department of Parks and Recreation, to start renovations of the maintenance barn at Creasy Bicentennial Park for $86,000 and authorize the township superintendent to execute all related contracts and documents.
So it is the Department of Public Services which is leading this project. So Greg and his team, Mike and Brian, are leading this project. So a little history, the brown pole barn out at Bicentennial Park is where our park and rec maintenance staff work out of. For the 20 years of that building has been there, there hasn't been a heated workspace or restroom facilities for the staff to use in the wintertime. You'll often see the staff running to Food Castle or going to the senior center or coming back here just, just to use the bathroom. So with this project, what we're looking to do is we're going to put a 20 by 24 addition onto the back of the building, which will have a, will have a heated restroom in there for them. It will also have a office and break room area separate from the main pole barn. The main pole barn where we will be adding heat to that also, so there is a warm space that they can work projects on in the wintertime. So with this, Greg and his crew have went out and they've got prices and that for, for this project, you know, everything from foam insulation to sealing the roof and anything that we need, plumbing, HVAC, all that. So that is where this project is, is coming from. We did budget money out of the Parks Millage for it this year, but also talking with Superintendent Limada, we both were talking about the possible use of ARPA funds that have been secured.
All right.
Any questions?
Straightforward. So the Parks and Rec will have everything they need after they have heated bathrooms, right? You guys are set.
Well, you know, it'll be a little bit better than the old days where sometimes you'd find an extension cord running out into the portage on with the space heater, so.
Okay, well, we don't want anybody getting hurt doing that.
Yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Limada?
So would the construction begin right away? I mean, cold weather won't mind, starting this?
Um, yeah, so we've been working with securing quotes and that, you know, assuming this gets approved, Mr. Boggs here will be?
Do you want to come up?
Sure. On what our timeline will be.
So actually, I got one guy that's out till Monday now, but yes, we would start, he'll take the package to Dennis, and we've got these old secured and whatnot, we'll start procuring materials, start digging post holes and stuff like that, and start doing what we can with the inclement weather and hopefully start, you know, framing and stuff like that. So we would like to, you know, early spring to, to get this going. So we're, you know, we're gonna, he's got to clear, his guys are going to clear and demo the existing barn, got a company coming in, spray insulation, the whole barn, we've got a company that's going to be rehabbing the existing roof because the roof leaks. So we're kind of rehabbing that whole barn to give it some life until, you know, you plan on building a new one, right? So.
Yeah, so, so one thing like what Greg said is, you know, one of the things that we're going to have to do, and it's going to take us a couple of weeks, we're going to have storage containers on site and we're going to have to pull everything out of the barn and put it in there because we can't have anything in there when they spray or when we're putting up the radiant heat inside the work area. And then also, their little office that they have right now, some ingenious parks staff over the years with a very small budget, just patched it together and that, so that office, we're going to completely take out and fix the electrical in there that is suspect, so.
It's, you know, I know the board is aware that we had quite a bit of deferred maintenance out at Creasy Bicentennial Park over the years, and we've, you know, we got the millage approved about four years ago or whatever it was, and we've been making some upgrades, especially, and we focused on safety first in a lot of those things. But I'm embarrassed to say, you know, when it was run by the Parks Commission, we didn't provide a lot of oversight because it was designed that way for the Parks Commission to provide the oversight. Since we took over in February of 2020, brought on Director Linehan in March, really started fine tuning the capital improvement out there, but I'm really embarrassed to say, we've got employees out there, township employees that work all winter long, they're repairing equipment, they're working, and they don't have a heated area to work in, they don't have a heated restroom, they don't have a heated break facility, and for the $86,000 and, you know, thanks to the expertise of some members of the DPW staff, the service technicians, we can get it done for only $86,000 using outside vendors. But to me, it's, it's one of those things, and I think, again, an excellent use of the ARPA funds that we have, it's, you know, an unexpected expense, but getting one of those things done with the government funding, it doesn't really impact our budget or what our planned capital expenditures were. We continue to work on our capital projects, on that deferred maintenance, but this is one of those good things to do where it's the right thing to do just from an employee standpoint.
Yeah, I agree, it's, it's overdue by a long time. So. Tell me this, unrelated to this building, I see your picture in some type of Parks and Rec thing for Central Michigan, what's that all about?
Oh, yeah, so the, the RPL Department, the Recreation, Parks and Leisure Services Department with Central Michigan, they focus professionals in the field that are graduates, and after a lot of begging, I agreed to be featured last Friday, so.
Congratulations, that's awesome.
Thank you.
That's good for our township, too.
Would it be like a publication, or I mean?
Um, no, so they, they do Finch Fridays, every Friday, and post on Facebook, you know, just kind of get out there, you know, what the graduates are doing and that, you know, what their major was, what they're currently doing when they get graduated, so.
Very good. Okay, so does somebody care to make a motion with regard to the renovation? Trustee Fike, supported by Trustee White?
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Item F, the board will consider a motion to approve the purchase of a replacement Active Directory server and associated parts and licensing from CDWG for $8,416.46 and authorize the township superintendent to approve any and all related contracts and agreements.
Mine shows $20,000.
That would be a different server, that's the next.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's the next one down.
Couple of them on the agenda.
We're on F. I'm way ahead of you guys. I've already approving it. No problem.
So the Active Directory server is kind of the primary server that when you log into a computer, it allows you to authenticate and make sure you are who you say you are using your password. It also keeps the database of all of our employees' accounts, and if we did lose the server, it would be kind of catastrophic and we'd have to really rebuild kind of a lot of things. It also helps with permissions when you log into file shares and things that we have stored to make sure that you can access those, you have permission to do so. So the server itself, last year during the strategic plan, I found that the server was coming close to its end of life hardware-wise, it's about seven years old now. We had a couple of those coming up, so we put in funding for this that was approved, and this comes in under that.
It's amazing all the technology and computers we use, isn't it?
Hmm. Well, if there's a motions in order, I'll make the motion, Mr. Supervisor.
It is in order.
Okay.
Supported by Trustee Fike.
Supported by Fike. Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, item G, the board will consider a motion to approve the purchase of a replacement BSNA OnBase database server and associated parts and licensing from CDWG for $20,288.58 and also authorize the township superintendent to approve any and all related contracts and agreements. Mr. Roosevelt?
So BSNA is our municipality ERP system that HR uses, finance uses, treasurer uses to do their day-to-day. That server needs some help, it's also end of life, coming up here shortly, but it's, it's coming to the point where I'm having to reboot the server every other week to get it running again and get it, get it moving, and it's not even running that great. So we, I did take a look at the server, how it was built originally, and I do think that there are some, what do you call it, the best practices that weren't followed for it. So rebuilding the server one is already required, but we're definitely going to be following best practices so that we won't run into kind of this kind of issue in the, in the future. You know, major part of it was to make sure that you don't have, we don't have a lot of other things running on the same server, so. OnBase, Robbie talked about the licensing for that, it's the document storage, document management software, and that'll run a database on the same server.
What is roughly the life of a server?
Five to seven years. It also depends on the operating systems you got on it, and there's also an end of life on those. So it's generally around seven years.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Roosevelt? I know you do tons of research on all of this stuff.
Yeah.
So we appreciate.
Yeah, definitely making sure I'm getting my ideal pricing or better on these.
I appreciate that. Okay, a motion be in order if someone care to make it? Motion by Mr. White, supported by?
Motion by White, supported by Fike. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Five, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. We shouldn't need anything for our IT for a couple of years now, right? Couple of weeks, probably.
I was going to say, he won't be back in front of you until at least February 8th, would be my.
We're just glad we're catching it before we have a major disaster, is all, I'm glad we're not meeting here, trying to clean up a mess. So thank you for staying on top of it and keeping us out of a mess. So I've been, I know there's been some near misses that we've avoided, but anyways, with that, future agenda items, anything that anybody wants to bring up that we need to make sure that we have on the agenda? Mr. Limada, any thoughts in terms of next month's strategic plan issues that?
I think there's a couple of things that we probably should discuss, and will probably, involves the branding committee and moving the signage forward. Melissa's put some information together on our sign-out front, we've got some costs and what that may look like now that we've kind of moved forward, and I hope everybody's had an opportunity to check out our, our new website relaunch, looks great, thanks to, again, Melissa Roberts, Executive Coordinator, she did a fabulous job of heading that up, but we're still ready to tweak it, we can still make changes. So as you go through it, and one of the things I like to challenge everybody is when you look at ours and you're comparing it, look at some others as well, and then find out what you like and then share it with us, you know, send it to me, send it to Melissa, because we're always wanting to upgrade, we always want to change, we want to get more information in there, not less. The more we can get people to start using our website as a resource, the better off we all are.
Going along with that website, I think the newsletter looked very nice, the upgrade in that, that we did with adding a few photos and some color, I think, really enhanced that. And I know I received one either from you or Ms. Roberts of another municipality, I'd like to see us even continue to improve on, on what we send out and how frequently, if we could. So let me get to that point in our branding.
So I think if we do the branding committee and then whatever anybody else wants, we look through and see which one has the most updates, since we just did a kind of a quick thorough review over the last two weeks, we'll see which one has most updates, we'll bring that forward.
Okay, very good. Jumping to the board reports, Mr. White, anything with regard to ZBA?
Update.
Okay. Anything with regard to Metro Alliance?
We meet tomorrow night.
Fabulous, very good. Mr. Raridan, okay. Clerk Robertson?
Nothing.
Is there going to be an election coming up, one?
There is in May, however, we have, we have only a tiny fraction of our township that is involved in a Lake Fenton Schools millage renewal. I believe the total number of households might be as low as between 20 and 40 households, the total number, but it's a very, very small portion in the, in the southwest corner of the township. Other than that, nothing else.
Okay. We're going to be talking about some issues, I think, in closed session that I've been, so I'm going to reserve my time for a closed session. Attorney Ladd, anything?
No, no, just, again, I'll make some comments in closed session.
Okay. Mr. Limada?
Just kind of a heads up to get you guys ready, but February 8th meeting, we're going to, you're going to be asked, we're completing performance evaluations on all non-represented staff, and actually this year, for the first time in the history of Grand Blank Township, we're actually doing all of the administrative staff, DPW staff, are getting performance evaluations, something that, you know, when they're represented by the unions, a lot of times the unions are reluctant to do so because they think we'll use it in a disciplinary format. So Human Resource Manager Colleen Nedzwicki and the department heads, you know, worked back and forth on finding an acceptable performance evaluation tool to use. We rolled it out last week, it's completing, going through this week and next week to where all the, the staff is actually sitting down and having a performance evaluation. Again, not to be used for disciplinary purposes, but to start a feedback loop so that people hear. And I'll tell you that, for example, we have an employee in assessing been here over 30 years who said during her performance evaluation, first time in, since she's worked for us for over 30 years, that she actually had a performance evaluation, felt like she got feedback on what she does and how appreciative she was of us taking the opportunity to do that. So that was pretty awesome. As an offshoot of that, every year in January, all department heads independently contracted have their performance evaluations, and then if there are going to be recommendations from me for wage increases, that comes to you in the first meeting in February. So February 8th, I would like to have an executive session where we can go in and talk a little bit about what we had budgeted and what my recommendations are based on performance evaluations. You guys won't actually be going through anybody's performance evaluation except for one, and that's mine. I will send you out under a separate cover, under an email, a different performance evaluation that we use to evaluate me, there's 13 metrics on there. If you don't know because you're not here on a day-to-day basis, primarily I work much closer with clerk, treasurer, and supervisor, obviously, but then for our interaction from a board perspective, and my providing you the information, my carrying out the job that you thought, are we doing the strategic plan like you asked us to carry out? I'm asking you to rate me on those things, there's 13 metrics. If you don't know, just click the NA box and move to the next one. But I look forward to the feedback and you'll see what that looks like, it's, it's very explanatory about, walks you right through how to use it and how to fill it out. Then we ask that you send it to Attorney Laddie. Attorney Laddie compiled-
Attorney Laddie compiles them into one document for me, and then it's an employee's choice on whether those are done in open or closed session. I always do mine in open session because I think the people have a right to know how well their, uh, superintendent is performing. Just, you know, just plan on having, spend a little bit of time on that, um, I appreciate it, I mean, I, I know it's a big ask for you guys to take more time out of your, uh, day or evening or weekend to sit down and actually walk through and think about, you know, how I'm doing and to provide me with, uh, the feedback that I'm looking for so I can be better at what I do. I appreciate what you guys do and I appreciate you taking that time to, to give me that feedback. You'll see that, um, probably out tomorrow or, you, you know, the next day at the latest, and then you have them in, long as they're in before the meeting, um, that's all we ask so that David has an opportunity to compile them. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Limada? Okay. I think we're ready, I guess, uh, we need some, I'll make the motion that we go into executive session, discuss, uh, attorney, uh, written opinion.
And I'll second that, to go into closed session.
Yes.
Uh, Trustee Ra, Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
You can go into closed session at 7:52 PM.